So, everything's good? Okay, thank you, Ryan. Okay, please join us for our afternoon meeting for the Board of County Commissioners. It's June 13, 2022. Please join us in the Pledgeable Legions.
The Pledgeable Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on our agenda is canceling uncollectibles. Do we have Judy and Connie available?
Judy is online.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
There you are, yes.
Hello Judy. Oh, there they are, two of them, two for one.
Two for one.
Good afternoon. Do you want to present your item, please?
So, our item is consideration of order number 2022-030 canceling uncollectible personal property taxes, $35,267.45.
Yes. And how many years did it take to come up with these numbers? I mean, is this, I noticed you, is this the one you gave us this wonderful schedule? Yes. So, some of them are like from 21 and they go back to 16, is that right?
That's correct. Some of them, the manufactured homes would actually go back to 2007.
Okay, back to seven?
Correct.
It's so amazing, I was looking at this list and there's quite a few of them that I have, I used to frequent. So, it's really sad when you realize that they've had a really hard time.
Well, these are property tax on the personal property, the business kind of equipment for some of these businesses, correct? Is that how, that's how we can think of this?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, these are businesses that have just gone out of business and these are the loose ends that they just stopped, ceased doing business and paying bills at some point?
That's correct. And some of them were bankruptcy also, like Shopko and the cleaners.
Yeah, okay.
Another, the restaurant, The Porch and Sisters, closed during COVID and I used to go there all the time. They had wonderful items on their menu. Okay, all right, well, thank you. Yeah, I see the other schedule went back to 2007, so that was quite a long history, $2,100. Do we have any other discussion?
So, you know, it is an amount of money, it's uncollectible, we're basically taking it off the books. I'm glad it's not a larger amount, is my point. So, it's good to be able to keep things organized and not keep chasing something that's not going to be, you know, collectible. So, I mean, I'm supportive of this.
I mean, it's unfortunate that, that not being able to collect these, these taxes places more burden on our, on our other taxpayers, but, you know, certainly understandable that, you know, when, when you experiencing, you experience things like bankruptcy, it's, you know, that's kind of the end of your, your opportunity to, to, to meet your obligations from that business, so I'm, I don't have any further questions about.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move order number 2022-030 canceling uncollectible personal property taxes of
Second.
Is there any other, further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing the work of sorting all of this out.
Yes. And now, we have item number two, I believe, is Chris Doty on the line, Ryan? Is he available?
Commissioners, howdy.
Hello.
Yes, howdy, that's term of the day.
It was spinning and spinning and spinning, but, but here I am.
There we go.
Okay, you look pretty, yeah, you're, you're doing fine.
Don't look dizzy.
So, good afternoon, Board. For the record, Chris Doty, Road Department Director. Cody Smith should be promoted to a panelist here too, if, if the moderator can areas.
You got a thumbs up.
He's also online. Yep, great. So, before you, it's an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for the US 97 Lower Bridgeway to Northwest, Northwest 10th Street Project in Terrebonne. This is an IGA board that we've, that's been in the works for five years, a very storied project that we're finally putting in play today with intergovernmental agreement. So, as, so I believe most of you are aware, the project will construct an interchange at the intersection of US 97 Lower Bridgeway and with that interchange, that allowed Lower Bridgeway and 11th Street to connect underneath the highway overpass and, and right at the ramp terminals and a kind of a dog bone roundabout concept. With that, the project will reconstruct 11th Street and Smith Rock Way that will include sidewalks for the majority lengths of those routes and bike lanes on 11th Street and Smith Rock Way. It'll reconstruct portions of C Avenue, Central Avenue, and other side streets adjacent to the project. It'll provide a south end at Chicanee feature on 97 that will assist with that transition from, from high speed, you know, rural highway to, you know, entering, you know, incorporated, unincorporated community and need to slow down. So, that's a, that's a feature of this project. And finally, there'll be a pedestrian safety improvement at the US 97 and Central Avenue to help facilitate safe pedestrian crossings of the highway at that location. With this IGA, the county will be obligating $10 million to the project, 7.3 of which is in our fiscal year '23 budget that was recently approved. And 2.7 will be allocated via the county's Surface Transportation Block Grant funding, which is currently being held by, by ODOT, Ford Deschutes County. And with that, we'll be able to, to leverage 100% of that funding into this project versus the 90% if we had to pull it out and build a project by ourselves. I want to tip my cap to your county engineer for recognizing that potential there. That saved the county 10% of that funding, so a quarter million dollars to be used elsewhere or get more value at least in, in this project. A key provision of, of the term of agreement within this agreement board caps the county's contribution at $10.13 million. And this is a very key element, given the inflationary times that we're finding ourselves in and the cost escalation of projects. So, our contribution is all in at 10.13. We previously, previously spent $130,000 on, on the feasibility study. So, we are, we are capped and it won't be asked to pay more. Of course, with various, you know, we, we could be asked to, to help ODOT advocate for more money for this project should the bids come in higher than, than what's available and, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. The project currently board is at 30% design. It's anticipated that the construction will take place in the fall of next year and take approximately two construction seasons to construct. And that'll be a big, a big to do in, in the community of Terrebonne. Finally, the IGA does not yet include the $1 million contribution for the sewer grant, sewer, yeah, contribution provided through Representative Bonham's office within the footprint of the project. This provision will be added at a later date once we finalize some details. But again, that was a, that was an ARPA funding allocation through Rep. Bonham's office that will allow us to basically never have to tear up this new construction to accommodate the future sanitary sewer system that folks in that community are working very hard to, to rally around and formulate at this point. So, with that, Board, do you have any questions, Cody or myself?
Okay, my first question is, we're talking about a, a dog bone. Is it, you, at one time it said it's going to be two dog bones? And so, if it is, what are your dogs' names? No, that, that was part of their talk today for Edco, was talking about people and their pets and everybody has a dog, so I'm just wondering, do you guys have dogs?
I have a dog, Charlie.
Okay.
Cody, I know Cody's got a dog.
Cody has a dog named Pepper.
Pepper. Okay, so we could, so are there really two dog bones here? We could call one Pepper and one Charlie?
Forming one, you know, and they're connected. That's informally referred to as a dog bone.
Okay.
That configuration, similar to what you see at Wall and Bond and, and industrial way. Now, we're, the informal name is it's the Terrebone.
Okay, Terribone, okay.
Nice.
That was very good, Chris.
So, is, is, will, is something similar being considered the dog bone, I mean, at, at Baker, not interchange? Is that, am I tracking that correctly?
Somewhat is one of those, those concepts, I believe, that was, was probably a little bit out of reach. I'm, I'm trying to think, you know, Cody, I think.
I don't recall seeing, seeing a full dog bone at that. I know the, the preferred alternative that's, that's floated to the top in the interchange area management plan is, is not a, not any kind of roundabout, I don't believe. I believe it's a signalized intersection there.
Okay, I remember, I remembered some of the concepts having off, off 97 roundabouts, but I, yeah, I couldn't, so it sounds like those, those ideas did not, did not rise to the top.
Yeah, not, not for that project. This project, that configuration allows the ramp terminals to be pushed closer together because you don't have conflicting left turn lanes that are fighting for the same space. And in doing that, I was able to allow several properties that were designated for full purchase to be preserved, basically, and avoiding any sort of relocation of, of property owners. So, so it was a very nice kind of pivot towards tail end of this project that will allow, you know, certainly a, a lower construction cost, but also not having to relocate property owners was a big part of that consideration.
Great, thank you.
Well, for this Lower Bridgeway 10th Street Terrebonne project, it's very exciting. This was allocated for directly by name for Lower Bridge in the 2017 transportation package. So, I know this is the conclusion of some of those efforts. It's kind of been around and around a few times, speaking of roundabouts, but it's exciting. Thank you very much for getting this real clear. You know, we're, we're doing a simple allocation and a, and a kind of a rounded out amount of $10 million. And Cody, thanks for finding, you know, that other opportunity for not trading the, the federal dollars for the state dollars in support of this also. So, and I'm glad that ODOT's being able to pick this up, get this to, you know, a thumbs up, design and, you know, planning effort. So, next, there'll be an ODOT project to, to go build this intersection at the end of Lower Bridge on Highway 97.
So, are we actually talking completion in fall of '25?
You know, a lot of that's kind of still, still up in the air, but, but Cody, I don't know if you have anything to add to, to what you foresee the schedule to look like?
I mean, roughly, yeah. I don't think ODOT's really scheduled, you know, provided a detailed schedule to that extent. Right now, it's, it's construction beginning in fall of '23, anticipating two construction seasons. So, I mean, if it was two, two, two full years of construction, then certainly that'd be 2025. I mean, I, I think probably a safe date to assume would be by the end of year, calendar year '25.
So, and, and Chris, again, what did you, what did you say regarding if ODOT comes back to Deschutes County and asks for more funding? We already doubled our funding, just wondering.
Correct. So, you know, like, like alluded to earlier, you know, projects are coming in a lot higher than, than previous construction estimates. You know, we're, we're pretty well tapped out at, at $10 million. I, I think it's very unique for a partner, an ODOT partner, a county to, to contribute this amount of, of funding into a project of this scale, you know, roughly one-third of a $30 million project. So, I think we've, we've certainly done our part. You know, there's, there are opportunities, I, I believe, where we would, you know, could help ODOT and to advocate for more funding for this project through perhaps some of the IIJA federal funding that recently was discretionary distributed by the Oregon Transportation Commission, if, you know, it comes in a lot higher and, and the thought is, well, let's, let's cut parts of this project. We don't want to cut any parts of this project. It's fairly well defined as, as a single phase. And so, I think we'd want to advocate for more funding through the state one way or the other and hopefully that, hopefully, we won't, hopefully it won't come to that. Hopefully, it, it will come in at the right price, we can get over this completion bubble that we're in and/or ODOT can, can just simply, you know, push in more dollars through whatever programs they have in place available to do that for projects like this, if necessary.
And Chris, you did, you did say, you, you just said that the, the million dollars that Rep. Bonham has been able to secure for the wastewater solution, even though those aren't in this package yet, the, the work is going to happen simultaneously, so, so you can get that, get that system in there while the streets are already all torn up.
Yeah, absolutely. That was huge, a, a great opportunity that just kind of came to us at the, at the right time. It would, it would kill a lot of the momentum of a sanitary district if we're building new streets only to immediately advocate for tearing them up because we didn't have the funding to, to place sewer line underneath them in, in that single project, so.
Right.
Great leverage there and, you know, like I said, I think we were very fortunate, a lot of, lots of stars aligned to, to make that happen.
And so, will there be an IGA modification later to add, to weave that in, or will it be a whole separate agreement?
There'll probably be a modification.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, I could, you know, out of, out of all of this work and, and all of this funding, you know, I, I could wish that we would get a solution to the congestion in Terrebonne as well, but that this project solves a lot of problems for a lot of people and I'm, I'm supportive of it moving forward as is.
It allows the, what is it, 6,000, 7,000 people at Crooked River Ranch to head north, are people that are using Lower Bridge, so I'm really excited. And are we doing some Lower Bridge work down there too, as a county?
We've, we've got a project identified that will start designing in fiscal year '23 for improvements on Lower Bridgeway between 43rd Street and Holmes Road, but the, the, at that intersection with 43rd, there's some, some major intersection improvements we're proposing to make that, that intersection and that, that move at that intersection to get to Crooked River Ranch safer.
Okay.
I'll move approval of document number 2022-084.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes for the Terrebone project. That's probably going to stick, you know?
Yeah.
No, thank you. It's, it's good to know that we're making, we are truly making progress, so slowly but truly. Cody, I think you're up next. Item number three?
So, for the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. So, these next two items, items number three and four are both in regards to vacation proceedings for a, a road vacation. A road vacation of, of this sort, generally, we would, I would have submitted as a consent agenda item, but since you guys, the board didn't have a consent agenda for this week, I figured just present it as an action item here today. So, I'm really talking about these next two items at once. I'll, I'll, I'll kind of introduce this and then pause so the board can take action on the first item, which is the resolution, which initiates the road proceedings and then, and then I'll finish up my report so the board can take action on the proposed order of vacation here. So, the road department's received a petition for the vacation of a portion of the WR Wilkinson Road. The petitioners in this matter are H. Porter Burns on behalf of Porter Kelly Burns Land Holdings LLC, who's the only abutting property owner to the subject right of way. And additional petitioner are Craig R. Smith on behalf of Hayden Homes. The WR Wilkinson Road was established by and in Crete County in 1908. Portions of the, this legacy road coincide with the present day Bear Creek Road, but portion of the road, subject to these proceedings, parallels, but does not coincide with Bear Creek Road and rather crosses Tax Lot 100 on Assessor's Map 171235 DC, which is one of the two properties on the eastern bend city limits between Highway 20 and Bear Creek Road that are subject to the House Bill 4079 City Abend Affordable Housing Pilot Program, which I believe the board's going to be discussing in more detail later this afternoon. The project includes the UGB expansion and city annexation of the subject property, which has not yet occurred, to provide for development of approximately 347 housing units, including 108 affordable housing units. And I'll just note that those were the numbers that were included in the zone change application by the applicants earlier this year. Those, those numbers may have changed, so if you hear different numbers later this afternoon, don't hold that against me. The vacation to subject right of way will facilitate the plating of phases two and seven of the House Bill 4079 project. So, at this time, I'm going to ask the board to consider Resolution 2022-045, which will initiate these road vacation proceedings.
Are there any questions for Cody?
I have no questions.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution number 2022-045, vacating a portion of WR Wilkinson Road.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
It's helpful to see this map. This is, this is good.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it's, it's you guys were discussing there of, of put up a map of the, the property and the, the subject right of way that's proposed for vacation there, which is highlighted in red. Excuse me. So, the subject right of way contains no road improvements, but does include utilities, including electric, electric utilities, natural gas, and communication utilities. The petitioners have submitted completed service provider consent forms from all service providers within the, the proposed vacation area. All service providers have consented to the proposed vacation. With this proposed vacation, no owners, owners of a recorded property right would be deprived of access necessary for the exercise of their property right within the proposed vacation if implemented. The vacation is necessary for the implementation, implementation of phases two and seven of the House Bill 4079 City Abend Affordable Housing Pilot Program. Based on this information that I've just provided, the road department has determined that the proposed vacation is in the public interest. So, with that, we, the road department are recommending adoption of order number 2022-031, vacating the subject portion of the WR Wilkinson Road. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions and consideration of order 2022-031.
Any questions?
Is there any other fun history trivia? Were there other sections of this road that are not there anymore or, you know, just the...
There are, there are some other sections of the road further east that, that were vacated. Off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly where those were. There are sections within the city of Bend, some of which were vacated and some of which still are in place despite plating that's occurred over that historic road in some locations, but that's a, that's a can of worms we don't really need to open, it's a city of Bend matter, so.
Yeah, understood. Just interesting, you know, it's just not aligned with the other road system. So, was, do you think it was utilized as a, you know, a route back in the day then?
Back in the day, I'm guessing it probably was. I mean, we, we see this a lot where, excuse me, you know, oftentimes, back in the day, these county roads were established, they'd, they'd have, you know, kind of odd twists and turns in them to, to get around certain properties that, that didn't want to participate. So, I, I don't know the whole story here. I mean, I did go through the historic record on this one, there was nothing of, nothing real notable that came up in that to add any, any color to the history here, so.
Great, thank you.
We are talking over 100 years ago, 1908. Any other questions, Commissioner Chang?
Nope.
Do we have a, a motion?
I'll move order number 2022-031, vacating a portion of WR Wilkinson Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cody. Thank you for sharing your dog's name, Pepper, is that right? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Not leaving just yet, though, so.
You what?
I'm not leaving just yet.
Oh, my gosh, you're going to still be here. Oh, yes.
One more.
I know, I have some questions about this next two. Why is this one, one so much more money per mile? I just, I know you're going to have a really good answer.
Excellent.
If first, Board, if I could, Board Chair, if I could ask, if, if we could actually do item six first and then do item five, that, that will put these two items in chronological order and kind of... chronological order and kinda help me better uh, tell the story here of what we're seeing in terms of asphalt prices.
Sounds like a good plan.
So I'm first gonna go to item six. Um, uh, Notice of Intent to Award for the paving of Handy Road, uh, excuse me, the paving of Alfalfa Market Road project. Uh, so the Road Department prepared uh, bidding documents uh, for the paving of Alfalfa Market Road, Milepost Four to Johnson Ranch Road project. Uh, this project will include paving and delineation of approximately five-and-a-half miles of Alfalfa Market Road, on, on, this, this is the five-and-a-half uh, easterly miles of Alfalfa Market Road. Uh, the project was advertised in the Bulletin and the Daily Journal of Commerce on May fourth. Bids were open on May eighteenth. Two bids were received. Before you this morning is a Notice of Intent to Award Contract, a High Desert Aggregate Paving, in the amount of one million, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. Uh, issuance of this Notice of Intent to Award would begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to dispute contract award. If no protests were received during that period, the contract would be awarded administratively. Uh, so I wanna note, th- this project was our first mainline paving project that we put out to bid this year. Uh, the engineer's estimate that we had prepared for this project prior to uh, advertising it for bids, uh, the prices were based on uh, recent increases we had seen in quoted prices uh, for uh, asphalt uh, concrete at the plant, uh, that our, that our um, operations and maintenance division had received. Um, unfortunately, that, our estimate did not uh, keep up with the rapidly rising cost of uh, asphalt oil, as well as diesel. Excuse me. So uh, yeah, so our engineer's estimate was about six percent, excuse me, that, the, the lowest bid was about six percent over our engineer's estimate. Um, any more questions on the, on the pricing there?
So Cody, can you explain to me, though, why this price per mile was fifty-four thousand dollars less than the other, um, item number five? Is it in a more difficult spot? I mean, you, I, I just seem like it was, you know, fifty-four thousand more a mile. Is there a reason why the shorter job is way more?
I haven't, I haven't completely figured out a price per mile here, I, I will note one difference between this project and, and the um, uh, Handy Road project that I'll discuss next is uh, uh, the Handy Road project, uh, or, excuse me, the Alfalfa Market Road project, part of this project includes some delineation work we're gonna do on the first, on the westerly four miles of Alfalfa Market Road, um, that um, uh, is out, it's outside the paving limit, so, so from milepost zero to milepost four, we're doing some additional delineation work. Terms of the price per mile, though, that you're talking about, I, I, um, uh, well, I guess the only other thing is that this project's gonna be an overlay project, whereas the Handy Road project, due to the um, the number of driveways and other things in it, that's gonna be a grind and inlet project, so there's some portions of that Handy Road project where we're uh, not, not touching the paved shoulders. Um, but, but ultimately, what you're gonna see here is on the Handy Road project, um, which, which we put out to bid and opened bids on two weeks later, the, the price of asphalt concrete went up about twelve percent, so ultimately, uh, in, in the two weeks between bidding these projects, we saw kind of a dramatic increase in asphalt concrete prices.
Okay, alright. I knew you'd have a, a good answer.
Uh, so uh, with this project, the contract completion date is September thirtieth. Uh, we haven't received any kind of construction schedule from the, uh, from the lowest bidder just yet, so we don't know the anticipated start date, but uh, ultimately, the project would, or the contract has to be completed by September thirtieth. Uh, so with that, yeah, pass it back to the board, answer any additional questions and ask for consideration of this item.
And that is September thirtieth of this year?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? For the Alfalfa Market Road paving?
I'll move Chair's Signature of Document Number twenty-two-two-two-four-four, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for the paving of Alfalfa Market Road, Milepost Four to Johnson Ranch Road.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So uh, just real quick, is this is a overlay? And you probably started off with this, I just trying to understand.
Correct, yes.
Cody, is this a, an overlay project?
That's correct, yes, it's a two-and-a-half inch overlay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any, no other questions? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, Cody, we're on to item number five.
Yes, so, uh, which is the paving of, Notice of Intent for the paving of Handy Road project. So, once again, Road Department prepared bid documents for the paving of Handy Road, uh, US twenty-two Butler Market Road project. Uh, this project will include paving and delineation on the uh, two-mile length of Handy Road, uh, between the new roundabout at uh, Highway twenty and Butler Market Road. Will also include paving of approximately uh, point-six-four miles of side streets uh, within um, uh, streets, streets that, that intersect with Handy Road through here, so that, and that might answer part of your, your uh, uh, earlier question, Commissioner Adair, regarding the price per mile. There, there are some side streets on this one also that are included in that. Uh, so wanted to note, we had, uh-
But I added all that in.
Initially, sorry?
I added the, the point-six-four mile with the two-point-oh-nine mile and did a, you know, it's three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, um, a mile, and the other one is like three-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. So I mean, it, it is significantly more.
Yeah.
And you're saying because of two weeks?
What's that?
Because of those two weeks of go, putting this out to bid, it just, the price went up that much?
Uh, that, that's correct, yeah. So, so first, we, we had initially planned to deliver this project uh, concurrently with ODOT's roundabout project, the US twenty-one Handy Roundabout Project, uh, but ultimately, we uh, decided not to do that, uh, because uh, within our project limits is Buckingham Elementary School, and we didn't wanna have a paving operation happening on Handy Road in front of the school, uh, that, that would severely impact school pickup and drop-off. Um, so, so we opted to delay this until after school was out, uh, so that we weren't interfering with the, the pickup and drop-off operations at, at the school. So this project was advertised in the Bend Bulletin and the Daily Journal of Commerce on May eighteenth. Bids were open on June first, which was two weeks after we opened bids for the paving of Alfalfa Market Road project. Two bids were received, so before you this morning is a Notice of Intent to Award Contract to LTM Incorporated, doing business as Knife River Materials, in the amount of one million, fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Um, once again, issuance of Notice of Intent to Award will begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to dispute contract award, and if no protests are received, the contract will be awarded administratively. Um, yeah, so once again, just, just to uh, go through my, my bulleted item here in my notes, bids for this project were open two weeks after the bid opening for the paving of Alfalfa Market Road project. Uh, the engineer's estimate for the Handy Road project was based on the quoted prices we had received, uh, for the Alfalfa Market Road project, but once again, we, we still weren't able, in our estimate, to keep up with the uh, uh, rapid rise in, in asphalt oil and diesel prices. So in that two-week period, the price per ton for asphalt, concrete in place, rose uh, a little over twelve percent from ninety-nine dollars per ton to a hundred-and-eleven dollars per ton. Um, work on this project is anticipated to begin in late July, and the contract completion date for this project is August thirty-first. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board to um, answer any questions and consider the matter.
Thank you, Cody. Um, do we normally get any more bids than this, Cody? Are two, is it usually just down to two different businesses?
Uh, in terms of mainline paving projects, um, so, y- you know, generally, we only have two uh, contractors in uh, Deschutes County who both own their own asphalt plant and produce asphalt, uh, at least at, at this quantity, and then also have uh, the construction crew to, and equipment to place the asphalt, that, that being Knife River and um, Knife, uh, Knife River and High Desert Aggregate. Um, occasionally, we'll, we'll see, um, we might see uh, another bid or two from, from outside, contractors outside of the area. Um, usually that happens if those contractors are already working in our area, like on a bigger ODOT project, and they've moved a portable asphalt plant in, into the area where they're making their own mix, so. I, I'm not aware that there's, there are any other contractors uh, presently working in the area who have a portable plant set up, so that this, uh, bids just from these two contractors was, was kind of anticipated.
Okay. Thank you, Cody, for that. Are there any other questions?
I have sort of a, a big picture question, um, Cody, I know, none of us has a crystal ball to, to predict when price escalations are gonna happen, price de-escalations are gonna happen, but do, I, I mean, in the way that we plan and, and budget and then, you know, execute on projects, do we have any way of taking advantage of uh, those moments when, when prices are, you know, prices and bids are lower, like to do more and then to, to do less as we're, you know, at moments like this, when we, we see prices escalating and we can't even, you know, our predictions can't even keep up?
Well, yeah, I mean, in terms of the first part of what you said there, I mean, uh, two years ago, we were doing that. We, prices were, prices were way down, things were real competitive, we were getting lots of bidders on our projects. Um, we, we did work to push projects out the door a little quicker and get, get, get them out to bid and under contract quicker. Um, probably the, uh, I'd say probably the last project that, that we uh, squeezed out during that, that period was, I, I believe it was our Tomalo Road, Tomalo Place Roundabout project, but um, but yeah, we, we, we were in that kind of climate, uh, you know, just, just two years ago. Um, uh, in regards to the second part of your pro, your question, um, uh, in terms of uh, you know, delaying projects, um, trying to wait out the, you know, the, the peak right now, I mean, that, that's certainly an option, it's, it's, um, you know, these are our two big mainline projects, uh, in terms of paving projects we're getting out the door this year. Um, our next big projects that will go out to bid, uh, our, our next big project, I should say, is our Deschutes Market Road, Heem Hook Road Roundabout Project, uh, which uh, right now, it's looking like we'll probably be advertising for bids in uh, September of this year. I mean, yeah, once, once we, once we get to that point, we're gonna need to take a hard look at uh, what the market's do- doing and, and if we need to uh, you know, i- if it is worth waiting something out, or if it's worth uh, getting it out the door now. Um, another, another thing I'd add, something that we uh, we, the county, haven't done, but, but maybe need to be considered doing, uh, is adding um, escalation and de-escalation clauses to our construction contracts, in particular for, for asphalt oil, but there's also options for adding it for uh, fuel and, and for other items, but um, uh, that kind of uh, that kind of clause, uh, in terms of our bid opening might, we might see prices come down for that, but ultimately, knowing that when the paving work occurs, which is gonna be months after the bid opening, uh, we may actually be paying more through that escalation clause for asphalt, but alternatively, if, if we start seeing a, you know, uh, a drop in those prices, you know, we, we could, we could also experience a de-escalation under those clauses, so it's a little bit of a gamble, and for the most part, you know, on our projects, our, our, our projects are fairly short duration, we're getting them out to bid, they're usually under construction within a month after that, we're usually wrapping them up, you know, wi- within a few months after, after that, so on some of these bigger projects we have coming up, we might, we might wanna start thinking about uh, introducing those escalation, de-escalation clauses, but that, that's still some, something we're, we're looking at and evaluating and seeing if it actually does make sense and if it is gonna be to the, to the benefit of projects ultimately.
Right, because, so for some of those bigger projects, the, the, the space of time between a contract award and, 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 and uh, the beginning of implementation or the end of the project is, is sometimes a little longer, and, and so you could see, you could see enough change that it would be worthwhile to consider those kinds of, um, those kinds of clauses? Is that, is that, okay?
Potentially, certainly, certainly, in particular, if we start seeing a, a downward trend in, in asphalt oil prices.
Right.
Certainly, we're not seeing right now, but.
Yeah, yeah. And it was also just really helpful for me to hear that, you know, when uh, you guys can see when the moments are good and, and the, the environment is very competitive and, and you can sort of accelerate a little bit, I, I mean, can we do that? Uh, is that, I, I guess one of the things I'm asking about is, you know, how liquid are we in terms of, you know, capital expenditure dollars? I mean, do we, you know, are we sitting and, are you able to, were you able to do that two years ago, two years ago, because, you know, we had a couple of million dollars in a capital reserve, and you could just say, this is the good time to spend this? Um, or, like, how do, how do you, how were you able to have that kind of flexibility?
Well, well, ult- ultimately, I mean, that, that's tied to the bottom line in our, in our annual uh, Road CIP fund budget, so in, in those, in, in twenty-twenty, um, even in, in twenty-twenty-one also, um, you know, we, we were, we were seeing savings on other projects coming in under budget. Um, we had some of these big, um, big, uh, you know, one-time payments to ODOT for these partnership projects that ultimately didn't happen in those budget years, so, so we had, we had that liquid, uh, liquidity in the CIP budget just because we had that savings there, so we could advance a project that was otherwise gonna, gonna happen, you, you know, in a subsequent uh, fiscal year, we could bump those up, and, and off the top of my head, I don't remember uh, which all, I, I know we had a couple of, of pavement preservation projects where we did that, um, off the top of my head, I don't remember specifically which ones, but um, but, but that's, that's, that's really where that flexibility would be.
Got it, thank you. Great.
Any, any other questions?
Nope.
Is there a motion, please?
I move approval of, uh, Board Chair's Signature of Document Number twenty-two-two-two-zero-nine-eight.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now to item number seven. Kyle, thank you so much.
Of course. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. I am here to discuss a project, it's actually two projects, split between Deschutes County and the City of Bend. Uh, this is for an affordable housing pilot project associated with House Bill forty-seventy-nine. It's actually one of two of these projects that's happened in Deschutes County over the last two years roughly. Um, the Deschutes County portion of this project involves the change of the comprehensive plan designation for a piece of property, as well as a zone change for that same piece of property. The City of Bend portion involves an expansion, a minor expansion of the City of Bend's UGB along its eastern boundary, uh, just outside of what's currently the edge along Highway twenty. Um, the property in question is a bit over thirty-five acres in this case. Uh, in this case, as I stated, it's directly adjacent to the City of Bend's UGB. This is actually following a uh, public hearing before, Deschutes County Hearings Officer for both of these projects that occurred back on uh, May tenth in this case, so just, just over a month ago. Uh, we had a public hearing, both for the Bend UGB expansion and the comprehensive plan change and zoning change for this, this property. Uh, the Deschutes County Hearings Officer issued a recommendation of approval for both of those portions of the project. For the Deschutes County portion, because the property in question doesn't contain any lands designated for farm or forest, there's actually not a secondary hearing required unless there was an appeal of the Hearings Officer's decision in this case. Uh, no appeal was filed for the Hearings Officer's decision and recommendation in this case, and so this is just an update to the board, uh, that this is effectively moving forward, and next week, I'll actually be bringing ordinances approving these uh, plan amendment and zone changes. On the city side of things, the Bend City Council does still have to host a second hearing for the UGB expansion, that's still required, that's actually gonna occur this Wednesday. Uh, barring everything moving smoothly through that process, the idea is for the county's comprehensive plan change and zoning changes to happen concurrently with the UGB expansion, which is slated to occur approximately the end of August. August nineteenth is, I think, kind of optimistically what everyone's hoping for, but obviously, that's subject to change, given whatever happens at the, the City Council hearing on Wednesday. Um, as I said, this is the second of two of these projects, I think some of the Commissioners might have been involved with the, the first one, which was actually the City of Redmond rather than the City of Bend. Um, same rules apply here. House Bill forty-seventy-nine, uh, was intended really as an experimental program to see if relaxing some of the state land use rules just for affordable housing proj- of the state land use rules just for affordable housing projects would be successful in any way. And so a minimum of 30% of the housing units that would ultimately be placed on this have to be qualified for affordable housing, which is, I believe, 60% of AMI in this case. And has to be in place for at least 50 years after the project's completion. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that the Board might have.
Any questions?
It's exciting we're moving this forward. I mean, it's a process, it's the kind of land use system, the Hearings Officers decisions and the whole process. But, you know, the state legislature put this in place and Bend and Redmond have been able to qualify, so.
And so it's going to come back to us then the 22nd?
So the idea is the ordinances approving the comprehensive plan change and the zoning changes would be before you on the 22nd. And staff, ultimately, again, this is all kind of going to shake out depending on what happens at the City Council hearing. But ideally, because it would be approved before a 90-day window, staff would offer adopting this by emergency and having the effective date coincide with whatever the actual UGB expansion date is. So everything's happening in one fell swoop, so to speak.
And there's no, no public hearing required?
Not on the county side, yes.
And these would be agenda items or consent agenda items?
I, it could be either. I believe they, yeah.
It'd be agenda items to talk about that date.
Correct.
I just figured that out.
In light of the emergency clause, it'd be best to have a regular agenda item.
Understood.
That would be appropriate, yes. What a good idea.
I don't have any questions. I think this is, you know, and this is a very exciting project. In many ways, it's a model for how our community should be growing. We're explicitly planning for affordable housing to be included in growth and we're using land very efficiently. I mean, 347 units in 35 acres is, you know, sounds like a pretty good, pretty good setup to me with, there'll be single-family homes and then there'll be, there'll be some multi-family housing as well. And I appreciate the orderly and thoughtful expansion of the urban growth boundary. So it's a great project. And I guess we should thank Representative Zika and the Legislature for making these opportunities possible.
Is there a motion? Or I guess we don't need one, do we? We'll just have a, we'll have a, a regular agenda then on the 22nd.
Correct, yeah. So next, next Wednesday, I'll be back before you with those ordinances. If you have any questions, in the meantime, you can feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Kyle.
Of course.
Oh, I'm asking everyone the name of their dog today. Do you have a dog?
I don't have a dog. I have a rabbit. His name is Gordy.
Okay, what's his name?
Gordy.
Gordy?
Rabbit named Gordy.
He's a very big rabbit.
How much does he weigh?
Probably like eight pounds.
Okay.
Dang, that's bigger than my cat.
Does he watch TV with you?
Sometimes.
Yeah, I know. We, I had a pet rabbit once. I love, they can be very sweet. As long as they don't bite you, right? I will.
Thank you, Will.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Tanya.
Hi there.
Good afternoon.
Hi, I bleeped out for a second, so I don't know if you introduced me or not, but hello.
Yes, we did. Well, Will handed us our, our opportunity. So yes, you may go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You should ask Kyle to show you photos of his rabbit. It's very cute.
What kind is it?
For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. I'm here today to follow up on a discussion that occurred earlier about psilocybin and Measure 109. Excuse me. So staff was last at the Board of County Commissioners on June 1st, a couple of weeks ago, to kind of provide the introduction to Measure 109, which legalized psilocybin, the psychedelic hallucinogenic compound in mushrooms. These were legalized in Oregon per the last general election, subject to the criteria that are outlined in Measure 109. As I noted in that, in that session, we're currently in the, or OHA, Oregon Health Authority, which is managing the program, is currently in a two-year development period, where they're kind of figuring out all the rules and regulations of the program and how it will be implemented. The program will begin on January 2nd, 2023. As I also noted, OHA is in the process of rulemaking for a number of components of this, of the measure. Everything, you know, things having to do with land use, things not having to do with land use at all, things having to do with taxes and testing and pretty much everything. And that is in progress now. And OHA expects that to continue for the duration of this year, of 2022, which leaves the Board and counties, as well as the industry, I will add, in a slightly difficult position of not knowing all of the rules quite before, very shortly before this, this program begins in earnest. So staff is before you today to kind of follow up on that discussion. Originally, we were going to come back a little bit later, but upon discussion with legal counsel, it was determined that it's best to kind of elevate, elevate the discussion of potential referring an opt-out measure to the voters earlier rather than later. And this is not done in any way to get in front of the Board or make any decision or anything like that on staff's part, but more just to recognize that if something wants, if we want this ballot measure to appear in November, there's a whole timeline of stuff that needs to happen. It involves filing with the county clerk by August 19th, having a public hearing on an ordinance that would actually prefer this matter to voters. So backing that up, that brings us into pretty much July. So staff and legal counsel thought it was in our, everybody's best interest to kind of elevate this, this decision point to the Board now. And I'll add that we don't anticipate that the next, I would say, several weeks, there would be that much additional information provided from OHA on the details of the program. So that also helped kind of nudge us, nudge us into doing this earlier rather than later. It's a relatively simple discussion today. The intention is not necessarily to get into the, the details of the actual measure or the rulemaking, although I'm happy to answer questions on that or provide whatever clarification I can. Dave Doyle would probably be able to provide information on kind of the legal aspect of the opt-out measure and the mechanisms of all of that. So staff is here and I should say that Will, thank you, Will, just handed out a flowchart of sort of the potential options of referring a matter to the voters and what would happen in either of the instances if the voters decided to support an opt-out or if the voters decided to reject an opt-out. In other words, go ahead with the program as written. I'll also add that, and I noted this before, but in this program, counties are automatically opted in from the start. So if no action is taken, Deschutes County is in the program. And there is, there are a certain amount of rules that would pertain to land use that are already baked into Measure 109. For instance, there's a required distance of 1,000 feet from a service center to a school, for instance. In addition, psilocybin manufacturing, which includes kind of cultivation as well as processing, that all must take place indoors. And that's all stipulated in Measure 109. So that's kind of the baseline of rules that are already, already in place. So with that, we were continuing to monitor the rulemaking process and they are having a lot of meetings. I believe they're monthly at least. And staff can advise the Board of any changes, but for now, we're just opening this up to discussion and a potential decision on if this matter should be referred to the voters in November.
So, Tanya, if we did refer it to the voters and let's say the voters rejected the opt-out, and that would be like after November 8th, maybe not for a couple of weeks after November 8th? So that would mean the month of December, we would have to really pull it together in order to, because this is going to be available, what, did you say, the 2nd of January?
The 2nd of January, people are allowed to begin applying for OHA licenses. And those licenses, or at least some of them that pertain to land use, will require a land use compatibility statement, a LUX, from the county. So the county needs to sign off saying that this is a permitted use in the county in order for people to, you know, send their licenses to OHA. So if, if the opt-out were rejected, in theory, the county could do nothing. And there, the rules that are in place now from OHA, from the measure itself that I alluded to, those would be in place on day one. You could do nothing and just kind of go with that program as written with those rules and that would be established. You know, some community development would have to, we would have to figure out our processes for kind of the actual administration of applications, but that, you know, that's fairly common for us. Alternatively, we can choose to proceed with some basic time, place, and manner regulations, which is a little bit difficult because we won't know the full kind of universe of the rules. But there's definitely things that staff could do for some basic TPM in terms of kind of where to allow things, where not to allow things. That could be an effort that could be made. It would be a very tight timeline, but we, we could kind of go with that as, as time permits.
And remember, youth activity center, that might be something that we would want to have identified in a definition before then, if that, you know, if that's part of the story. You know, you're saying it's what, 1,000 feet from a school that's already out there?
From a school. Yeah, and they define, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe it says elementary or secondary school, something to that effect.
Okay.
I mean, based on that, some of the questions I asked at our Planning Commission meeting the other night, it, it sounds like if the statute hasn't already set parameters around things, then us trying to constrain things significantly more than what the statute, what the, what the bill, you know, says could get us into trouble. Is that, I mean, is that a?
Could be confusing.
Is that the right way to look at things? I mean?
Yeah.
You know, because I asked a simple question about, about the scale of facilities. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm open to, I'm, I'm open to us being part of the, you know, collective state learning about, about the potential therapeutic value of this. I just don't want, you know, the enormous warehouse that produces half of the supply of psilocybin for the state to be here in Deschutes County necessarily. And, you know, so if we could, you know, if we could, you know, through our time, place, and manners, manner guidelines, if we could, you know, cap the scale of, of these kinds of facilities, I would feel, you know, I wouldn't, I would feel a lot more comfortable with, with the situation and not feel like we had to put the opt-out measure before the voters. But it doesn't sound like that's, that's a feasible thing. And if that's not a feasible thing, then I would imagine youth activity centers and stuff like that would have a similar kinds of issues for us if we were sort of overstepping what the, what the legislation set. Is that a reasonable way to look at this or?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Dave or whoever else, Will or Peter is in the room, weigh in on that. But it is possible that, yeah, we, the county could institute a time, place, and manner regulation and then it's kind of either undone by the, by the rules that are, that actually are, come out later, or they might conflict. It's possible that that could happen.
I want to recognize Peter.
If I may, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. To Commissioner Chang's question, I think what we learned with, with regulating marijuana is the regulations need to be reasonable. It's going to be important to provide, to the greatest degree possible, you know, I think, clear and objective criteria. And what we've learned over the years is that you can't use the time, place, and manner regulations to ultimately deny, you know, an industry. So we would, we would want to proceed cautiously and, you know, as, as the Chair noted, youth activity center was not defined a few years ago by a previous board. And as, as the, the Board that was in, was in place trying to administer those rules, that ambiguity led to some interpretive issues and those were challenged. And ultimately, we became, we found out that it became very difficult to justify those provisions of code. So it's going to come down to reasonable regulations and what, what staff would recognize to the extent we find ourselves preparing some for, for ultimate consideration for the Board of County Commissioners, the more clear and objective they are, the easier they are going to be able to administer, I think, the greater likelihood that we'll stay within the sidebars of those being reasonable.
After listening to several members of the Planning Commission, I really feel like I'd like to put it back to the voters because it was such a close vote. And what was that, 2020, the vote? And then last year, we had the cartel here, Mexican, Chinese cartel here. There's a lot of things happening in Oregon that I'm not quite sure where, you know, I'd rather hear from the voters if, you know, if they're like, oh, sure, let's go ahead. But I feel like the state had two years to really work on this and it hasn't, you know, we're still waiting on the rules, so.
So procedurally, we would have a public hearing before we would, could we vote on that today, putting it on the ballot? I mean, just?
You could direct us to prepare the ordinance and the ballot measure. We'd schedule it for a public hearing in July.
But a public hearing is required, I guess, is the question?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'm supportive of the public hearing because then the following of a public hearing, we can make a clear decision about putting it to the voters or not, is what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'm open to the public hearing. I, you know, I, again, I do wish that the legislation or a more completed rulemaking process could give us a better sense of the land use implications at this moment. Because, you know, that, if there was a little bit more predictability around that, I might, I might not be as interested in, in spending time on, on exploring this. But, you know, it's sort of, it's pretty wide open. So at, at this moment, so what this, what this land use would look like. So I, I'm, I'm open to the idea of a public hearing.
One of the scenarios from a discussion I had is the, the measure says you can't have it in a residential area. You can't have a service center in a residential area. So then we're talking about rural land use. And I said, well, what does, you know, with our zones, RR10 or MUA10, I think of, it's kind of the smaller parcel residential style lands. Oh, no, that wouldn't be there, but it'd be an EFU. And I said, oh, so resource land. So then a service center is going to be only, you know, this is just one of the scenarios that was just talked out. Service center only allowed on resource land in the rural Deschutes County, which could be all parcel sizes at that point. So then this is exactly kind of the, you know, the rural events discussion that was going on a dozen years ago for weddings, you know? Oh, we're going to have what on what farmland? So we really need to understand what's possible. We don't know. I mean, I've heard different things from different people. So by having a public hearing, though, we might, we might pull out, you know, either the Advisory Committee for OHA right now, getting real clear about what they're thinking and what would it look like on the land of rural Deschutes County. Or if there's nobody being able to give us any direction, that kind of gives me confidence in like, well, let's, you know, get it to the voters, knowing that we need some, you know, somebody needs to get real clear on what the land use would look like in the rural county. Because when you don't know, you're not going to want to accept it unless you.
Well, the vote was very, it was very close in Deschutes County, 4852. So I think, you know, it'll be good to have a public hearing. And maybe we might know more next month if they have another meeting, Tanya.
Well, we need some media coverage on this. You know, we'll have a press release saying that we have a public hearing on the concept of, you know, psilocybin production and service centers in the rural Deschutes County from Measure 109. So people need to get a little bit of brain space around the county even about what's happening here.
Can I ask some of our, some of our community development staff? So the legislation or the ballot measure language says, you know, no residential areas. But I mean, there are significant commercial and industrial zoned portions within incorporated cities. Is there, I mean, is there buffering on residential areas or could we see some of these service centers in, within commercial or industrial zoned areas within our cities?
So, Tanya, I'll, I'll reply if it's all right with you. Our reading of the, of the code that you just cited, Commissioner Chang and Commissioner DeBohn brought up as well, the construct of that state law, the way we interpret it, and we can confirm this, so again, this is, this is as of June 13th, is that the way it's structured is service centers can't be located in a city limit in residentially zoned property. property. They're specifically precluded from that location. Anywhere else in a city, and that's a conversation with, with our municipalities, but for Deschutes County, service centers, if we didn't, if, if, if we find ourselves, you know, opting in or developing TPM, time, place, and manner regulations, ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners will need to determine where they would like production, processing, and service centers to locate. So it's, it's wide open, as, because there's not, there's not a lot of specificity in, in the statute as of today, and we're, as a constant theme, we just don't have any information from the Oregon Health Authority in terms of how they're going to be limiting the operation of service centers in terms of employees, in terms of clients, in terms of the amount of psilocybin that's, that's allowed to be at any one service center. There's a lot of unknowns. Can they be, can they occur, can there be outside areas for, for the service centers? Many unknowns. But in terms of zoning, what I just summarized is, I think, wide open.
So for Deschutes County rural properties, you don't think there's any limit? The reading would be that there's no limit from the vote?
Correct. What, what the statute says is it kind of, the way it's structured, it says service, it explicitly prohibits those areas in city limits and residentially-zoned property. And then what is it, and then the statute, as it pertains to rural lands, it talks about how production and processing and service centers on EFU can occur with some limitations. It can't be a commercial, it can't be, it can't function as a commercial activity in conjunction with farms. It can't be used as a basis to, to justify a farm dwelling. So it's, really was oriented towards it being allowed on EFU, and then it's opened, and even, that's just, that's, that gives, there's latitude there, it's not a requirement for service centers. So it, the way the law is constructed, counties can determine where service centers can be located, whether it's commercial, whether it's industrial, whether it's in rural residential exception areas, certain parcel sizes. I mean, you can imagine, there's a whole index of standards that could potentially be applied. And unfortunately, again, sorry to beat the drum, but we just don't have any information on how the Oregon Health Authority is going to regulate these service centers.
So, I mean, you could, so in a city, you could have like a commercial block that backs up against residential, and, and it's, you know, the residential restriction doesn't say, you know, doesn't say, because you're this close to the residential neighborhood, you can't have a psilocybin service center on this commercial block.
Correct. And, Olivia...
That makes a lot of, that makes a lot of city blocks eligible for...
Local governments have the ability to implement TPM, so setbacks, you know, in that scenario, their, a locality could, could find that they want a broader setback from those residentially-zoned properties. And each locality will have to determine what they find to be reasonable and enforceable, recognizing that someone could, could always challenge whether or not those, those development standards are reasonable or not. What we learned from the marijuana industry is an applicant has to be able to understand how the codes apply to make an investment-backed or an informed decision about whether or not they want to, you know, potentially purchase a piece of property. So there needs to be some certainty that it can be located in a, in a particular area. There can't be so much ambiguity that, through the public process, through the interpretations of, of local code, that one finds themselves barred from, from, from citing that particular industry, or particular use. A lot of unknowns.
Who's surprised? Do we need a motion then?
Show support for setting a date for a public hearing.
You can make a motion. I mean, I think that, we heard you loud and clear, we'll get, working with scheduling a date for the public hearing and working on the, the proposed measure and the ordinance that would refer it.
If it can be after July 8th, just in case of my jury duty.
Okay.
I think we also heard a press release as well to ensure that...
Right.
The general public understands what's being contemplated. Great, thank you.
That would be great.
And if there's, if there's going to be a lot of interest in this, should we try to do this as an evening public hearing, or?
Fine with me, but, yeah, I mean, if there is engagement, I mean, that's fine with me.
It seems like my fellow commissioners think that there's going to be a lot of interest in this, so, I mean, if we, if, if that's the case, and we want to make this accessible to people, do we have, do, is there, do we need to do that, or?
We need to know to schedule it. So if you want it to be an evening, I'll work with Sharon and find out what's available on your calendars and...
How about we set it for a Wednesday board meeting for an hour or two, and then if there, if it does get, and, and an evening follow-up public hearing, you know, any testimony not heard during a couple-hour period, you know, general structure of a plan, we'll see if, if people get engaged or not.
You've done that, I think, in the past with marijuana, where we met in the afternoon and then convened and met 5:30 that night.
We did, we scheduled like at 1:00, and then again at 6:00 or 5:30 or something. We did that just to...
Because then that totally gives people the opportunity, yeah.
We could certainly, if that's the board's wishes, I'll work with Sharon and get it scheduled that way.
Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, too. We are now to item number nine. Chad, everyone?
Chad Stintola, Director of Solid Waste, and accompanying me today is Tim Burnell, our incoming Director of Solid Waste, in the background there. And this is Dwight Miller, he's Project Manager with Parametrics, our consulting firm that's assisting us with this landfill sighting effort. Wanted to do a work session with, with the board to discuss the landfill site selection criteria. This is kind of the, the critical document that we'll be using as the initial tool for looking at specific sites and screening down to ultimately a, a single site. I wanted to recap kind of the progress we've had over the past a couple of years on this effort. If you recall back in 2019, we did a solid waste management plan that was driven by the, the limited capacity we have at Knott Landfill, plus the need to expand recycling services in the county. And the Board of County Commissioners approved that solid waste management plan in late 2019. One of the elements was that we would, we would cite a landfill in Deschutes County. So with the approval of the solid waste management plan, we, we formed a landfill sighting group of, of in-house, of staff with the county, resurrected the landfill sighting effort that was conducted back in the 1990s when the regulations were changing. County had done a fair amount of work on landfill sighting in, back in, at that time, and it was, that, that was a very useful tool for developing an updated site selection process. We worked through the process to a point where we needed to get outside assistance, and we went through a solicitation and retained Parametrics to help us move forward with the project. At the beginning of this year, we, we reconvened the solid waste advisory committee, we had to repopulate a couple of vacant positions, and we've held two meetings with the solid waste advisory committee. The initial meeting was to introduce the team and give the, the committee members some basic information on this landfill site selection criteria. And the meeting we had a couple weeks ago on May 17th, we, we were focused on the very, on the specific details of the, of the sighting criteria, got input from the, from the committee members, and put together a document that we, we want to have the board take a look at and get your input and, and approval on before we, we move forward with the actual site selection process. So that's, that's where we are today. Get our, our, so I'm going to pass the wand, the baton to Dwight here in just a minute to go over the specifics on the landfill site selection criteria. The philosophy behind this is to do a methodical, thorough, and, and open process to ensure that the public and the community and the board that, that we're doing a very thorough and detailed look to, to find the appropriate site for the next landfill in Deschutes County. One of the things that came up with the solid waste advisory committee, we realized, although the landfill is, is the driving factor in this effort, we certainly recognize that this is an opportunity for other types of solid waste facilities, composting, waste diversion for recycling, possibly some kind of alternative energy processing through biodigestion or things like that. So we're kind of branding the, the facility as a solid waste management facility, but I just want to make sure everyone understands that the, the true driving factor behind this is, is citing a landfill. So with that, I'm going to, I'm going to pass things over to Dwight, he's going to give you a little bit, a bit more in-depth discussion on the deciding criteria, and certainly any questions that you have for us.
Thanks, Chad. Thank Commissioners for having us here to talk about this. So, as Chad noted, we, we have gone through a couple of solid waste advisory committee meetings, presented the, the criteria at the first meeting, received comments back, and as well as, kind of had a pretty robust conversation at the second meeting, which was really good, and it really helped to ensure that the, the criteria really meet the, the needs of the county, you know, kind of going forward as opposed to just looking back, you know, it's pretty important. And as Chad noted, as far as the facility being a, a solid waste management facility citing process, meaning that it has a lot of other components to it, but when it really comes down, particularly to the environmental measures, it really isn't a landfill that you're trying, you know, mainly to protect the environment from, so to speak, just to ensure that the protections are in place. The, and I'm hoping these are, these are good and big for you, these slides, so you can, you can see them clearly. They are also in the, the documentation in the file here. But the one thing I wanted to particularly note on, on this, which we call the coffee filter, or paint filter, so to speak, for the process that we go through, you really set a great foundation in the solid waste advi, or solid waste management plan that was completed in 19, that essentially laid out the fact that you wanted to cite a new facility here in the county, and just generally what the parameters of that, the facility would be. So that then set the groundwork to go forward with a citing process here in the county. And so that, that's always the, really the most important thing, is to, is to set that foundation.
Yeah, say a few words along those lines. That's exactly the idea, is it's been determined it's going to be cost-effective and of great benefit to have this facility here locally, in the county, short geographic, you know, step to get to it, whatever that looks like, you know, whatever direction we're going. So through this process, I definitely want to just welcome people to be advocates for this citing criteria, this citing process, because it's going to be hard, anybody, it's going to be hard, you know, where do we want to put it? Well, let's figure it out. So that's what we're trying to do right now. So that's the big picture here, is, is yes, we want to do it here, there's reasons we do want to do it here, and let's try to work together the best we can.
Yep.
Did everyone attend in the second meeting, the, for the solid waste advisory committee? Was, were most everyone on that group at that meeting on the 17th of May? Do you know?
It was a quorum.
Okay.
Decisions at large were all there. Representatives from Bend and Redmond and Sisters were there. The representative from Lepine was, was not in attendance, but we, we did have a quorum, and it was, it was a substantial majority of the, of the committee was in attendance.
Okay. So that's good to hear, because I think it's really important. Wasn't the survey saying, like, it was 80 something percent, maybe? I don't know, that, that high that people wanted to keep it in Deschutes County? Do you remember the number, Chad?
It was, it was close to that on, on the formal survey. It was in the 80%. Also, as far as a, a committee member attendance, they all received the minutes and, and packet for the meeting, so even though the Lepine representative wasn't there, he got the full package, including the criteria there.
Good, thank you.
But it can, it could, you know, as a general principle, everybody could want to keep it in Deschutes County, but when, when we get to specific sites, sure, there'll be, there'll be some, there'll be some lively discussion about why this one instead of that one.
Yeah. Before Dwight continues, I, I think I may have mentioned this at a, at a previous meeting, we did have a meeting hosted with the, with the Environmental Center to meet with some of the local environmental groups, Thousand Friends of Oregon, the Desert, Oregon Desert Management Association, I think is the name of that group, Natural Desert Association, and a couple others. So we, we gave them a, a kind of a preview of the process and what we're going to be doing, and we're going to continue to meet with them on a regular basis. We want to make sure we have open dialogue with them throughout the process.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and actually, as part of that, we also have a stakeholder process going on, where we've had interviews out with stakeholders and potential stakeholders, just to get feedback on criteria, as well as process, just to, you know, to ensure that we have a very robust public process out there for, as this goes forward, much as you had for the solid waste, solid waste management plan, so that, because that was a very robust public process, and, you know, to ensure that you had community dialogue on the plan, as well as, as ultimately, you know, had a very strong survey for, for having an in-county facility. So with the, with the, the coffee filter here, the, a couple of things that I did want to note, and, and I'll, I'll get into this at, at the end as a wrap-up as well, but just to kind of give you a sense, the reason why we have this kind of permitting, or permitting down, is that as we go through the process, we kind of do a county-wide screening of areas where a, a landfill facility, solid waste management facility could be located, and then start looking at specific sites. We have made a real point of not considering sites while we develop the criteria. We want the criteria to be as objective as possible, and so we don't want to be thinking about, oh, well, what would work well for this site, or this area, or whatever. We don't want it, we, we have purposely not had that as part of what we're, we're doing. And so going forward now, we will use the county's GIS system to, to start, you know, screening areas based upon the criteria that we've developed. And that's, that's kind of when we start applying these objective criteria out to the, out to the county. And actually, you can go to the next slide, please? Oh, you have it, okay. And, and so we'll get into the, into the details of these, and it's, it's actually best to read them in, in the, in the, the report there, in the memorandum we had, because it's pretty small print when it, when it gets up there. But it's really good to, to, to kind of get a sense for how we came about, particularly the weighting of the criteria. So we have three levels of definition of criteria. So that this level one, we have these three areas, three top-level categories, and these are site characteristics and engineering, and so this is like size of parcels, ownership of parcels, it's actually where the geology, hydrogeology fit in, because they're talking about site characteristics here. And then the next one is the natural resources, and so that is of particular importance, wetlands, threatened endangered species, specifically sage grouse and, and other overlays within the county for environmental protection. And then the third is land use, very specific to some federally mandated, such as FAA rules about how close you could be to an airport, down to much more specific as far as the zoning within the county and what's allowed where. The idea is that we ultimately score sites based upon each of these criteria, and so the, those scores then, based upon the weight that's on each of these criteria, then roll up to a total score for a site. Now, it's, it, you know, it, it, it sounds kind of confusing, but when you actually look at the memo, you can kind of see how it's all laid out and all. But that second level, we break down these three categories into either, actually, specific criteria or even subcategories. And then the third level, we have broken it all the way down into the, the final criteria for, for given areas, and that we actually are scoring sites at. The, and we can actually bring up the next slide. There we go. So what, what we have here, and so I've, I've got a slide for each of the, of the categories. So this first one up is site characteristics and engineering. And you can kind of get, from this, you can kind of get a sense for how we, we weighted these. So each of these categories, we, we weighted first, and so those, that's actually how the previous slide showed this. So engineer, site characteristic, characteristics and engineering had a, had a weighting So engineer, site characteristics and engineering had a, had a weighting of thirty-five percent. So thirty-five percent of the entire, one hundred percent of the weighting was for that category. Natural resources, the same, thirty-five percent, and then land use, thirty percent. And so in this, in the slide that's up right now, you can see, this is the site characteristic and engineering, and then we further broke down each of those, the category into other, you know, various areas. So we have site availability and acquisition potential, so this is like the size of sites and the ownership of the sites, the number of parcels and so on. We have geotechnical location factors, and these can be fault areas, seismic, impact zones, unstable areas. Next, we have floodplains, and you'll note floodplains is one that we don't break down further. So it actually has a score right at that, and that's, or weighting right at that level, and then that's, that is what the criteria is defined at. Then we have groundwater protection, development issues, such as soils, topography and the like, and operations. And so, and then these are each broken down into further. And so that's what this table really does, is it shows the overall weighting. So one of the things that, at the first SWAC meeting, people said, well, what's, what's the value of that over the entire, the entire scoring of the site? So that, on that far, that far right-hand side is the actual percentage that that criterion is of the entire one hundred percent of the scoring. So as you can see, by the time you boil, you know, about thirty criteria down, they can, they can vary from below one percent all the way up, you know, well over, over that, up into about five percent for some.
This is very, very helpful in terms of helping people understand the weighting of these different criteria. Will you, and I'm sure that you've got them in your GIS system, but will you literally be able to pull out and show people individual overlays? Here's groundwater levels, you know, just, this is just a map of groundwater levels across Deschutes County.
Yeah.
So, because I think that this will, this process will reach a point where you've filtered areas out because of fatal, you know, you used the term fatal flaws in the memo, and it would be, I think it would be very helpful in terms of transparency for people to just say, like, that fatal flaw, that's what the map looks like. You can see this site, you know, just, you know, it's the middle of a hundred-year floodplain.
Yeah.
No go.
And that's a, that's a really good point. Our first step going into this is to take all of those fatal flaw criteria and to do an overlay that you can actually see how each of these plays into that, into that mapping to have, and as I say, it's not excluded areas, it's actually resulting areas where you might be able to cite a facility. So keeping it on the positive side from the standpoint that these are the areas that based upon, you know, after we've, we've kind of screened out the fatal flaw areas, that you would be able to cite a facility, at least, you know, from, from this, this level of investigation. And so that, it's a really good point, and, you know, one of the things I do want to note is that in our documentation for this going forward, we will have a pretty robust narrative on the sites that we get down to, and how they scored, and why they scored, so that it's, it's not just looking at a map, but it's also kind of a narrative to kind of describe the site as well, which I think it really helps to, for people to understand why a given site made it through the process ultimately.
And so do you, do you believe that there will be twelve sites that you'll be able to come to? I mean, if you look at what you're asking, you know, ideally five hundred and fifty acres, not near an airport, I mean...
You know, I, it's hard to say. I can't say for certain that we're going to find the twelve. My guess is that we probably will, and the reason being is that, you know, two sites that are contiguous could be seen as two sites. I mean, even if it's, you know, ultimately is, lays out as, you know, five thousand acres that are contiguous acres, that, and I'm not to say that there is such a site, but that that might be multiple sites that could be, that could be located, and one might be a little bit better than the other just because of location, or topography, or whatever, and so it, that one area might score out better than, you know, than the area that's adjacent to it. So I think from that standpoint, my guess is that we probably will find the twelve sites at the broad level, yeah.
And they'll have, and they'll have scores associated with them, so...
That's right.
Maybe you don't have twelve sites that score eighty-five or above, but you'll have some that are, you know, high, and then you might have to go all the way down to like, well, this, this one's only sixty, but this gets into our, you know, this is number twelve.
That's right. And, and ultimately, you know, it's pretty important that you have that larger, that larger grouping of sites, just because you, we have, we, at that point, we will have not done a thorough field investigation, and only kind of a light field investigation, so to speak. So at that, going from broad to focused screening, that's where we do more of that field work. We don't do, you know, full wetlands delineations, we don't do drilling and the like, but we will go in there and we will take a much closer look at available data, and then, you know, doing some ground truthing of that, which will give us a much better feel and allow us to, to refine those scores if necessary, based upon what we see on the ground more closely. So we can go to the next slide. So you can see from the, that most of the criteria actually do fall into the site characteristics and engineering, and so this next one, which is the natural environment, has the same overall categories weighting as the prior one, but it has a lot fewer criteria. But these criteria are, are some of the, the more critical ones, and they actually are some of the fatal flaw criteria. And this is particularly, probably the biggest issues here from a fatal flaw standpoint are the wetlands and waters, and then some of the, the species protection, such as threatened and endangered species, wildlife, area combining zone, and then the greater sage grouse combining zone. So those are pretty critical areas in how we're evaluating these sites. And so, you know, when you start laying those out, that's probably where, you know, there is, there is a, a feeling by, by staff and the technical group in setting the initial weighting, and then also from the SWAC, that this was a very important category, and then, you know, these, these individual criteria were very important to laying out sites. You know, understanding that this is a facility that could operate for a hundred years, and so really wanting to ensure that it's going to fit into that, that local environment as safely as possible.
So I found it fascinating that it said you had to have a two-mile radius for the golden eagle nest, and yet bald eagles are only a quarter of a mile. And I remember, we had a golden eagle nest area down Mackenzie Canyon, but I don't remember that it was, you know, it was two miles. So that seems fairly significant.
It is fairly significant. That is what we determined coming out of state and federal regulation, and then also drilling down somewhat locally as well on that. But, you know, I'll take a look at it, Commissioner, just to see, make sure that, you know, that's, that's appropriate.
No, I mean, I would go back and look at my notes too from that, that study.
Because generally speaking, there, at least from my understanding, is that there is a higher level of protection for golden eagles versus, versus bald eagles, and others may know that as well.
Since, since we've dealt with DDT, you know, impacting their, their eggs...
Yeah.
Bald eagles have recovered pretty strongly, but golden eagles are still challenged.
Challenged, yeah, yeah. And, I mean, just anecdotally, just from the birds that you see out there, you see a lot of bald eagles and a lot fewer golden eagles.
Bald eagles, like, can scavenge quite a bit too, so they may actually like having a landfill.
We actually see quite a few bald eagles at non landfill.
Is that what you have a lot of, then?
During the, during the fall and early spring, yeah.
Okay, I thought so.
Yeah. They spend a lot of time in the wild stealing fish from other birds.
Yeah, yep, yep. And then the next, the next category up. And so this is the, the land use, and so most of this is fairly locally driven on the land use criteria, except for proximity to airports. That is a very specific federal requirement, ten thousand feet from a, from a jet-engine airport, so that, so, you know, that, that's actually, you know, it's one of the easier ones to lay out, because you know where the airports are, and you can lay those out fairly, fairly quickly. And then site zoning, adjacent land use impacts, so understanding what adjacent land uses are, the distance to residents, distance to nearest roads, site visibility and aesthetics impacts, and then transportation needs and opportunities. So pretty much from the standpoint that are there projects that are needed, or are there projects that are coming online that may actually support a given, a given location? And then onsite land use impacts, these are such as displacement of current activities on those, known cultural resources, as well as potential varied archaeological sites. And so being very careful, you know, both for the natural environment, but also for the cultural resources and historic resources of these sites.
Can I ask a permitting question about, about this solid waste management facility? Will this, will this site have to go through NEPA, as well as state and local kind of land use processes?
So state and local, typically not NEPA, because there's not a federal nexus, unless I, you know, you were, you're acquiring property from the federal government or something like that. And that's actually, interesting that you bring that up, because one of the, one of the criteria is, is land ownership. And so we have as the lowest-scoring federal properties. And it's not that, that those properties aren't good, and they could be really good sites, it is the, it's kind of the time risk, because it takes a long time to acquire federal properties, go through the environmental process for a federal transfer, and it's just a difficult process. As Chad likes to note, it takes an act of Congress to do that, and so, and it literally does, and so it does take a process. And that would be something that would require a NEPA action, and then have to do a NEPA environmental review.
I mean, because many of the criteria that we're dealing with, you know, cultural resources, threatened and endangered species, they're already addressing the, you know, key NEPA considerations, and so I was wondering whether we actually had a NEPA requirement, or whether that was just for federal, federal ownership sites. And I do want to say about that, that the assumption that we have built in here that it might take ten years, I think is a little bit long. You know, I, I've, I've witnessed a number of these federal conveyances, and, you know, we've actually had quite a lot of them in Deschutes County. I mean, you know, wastewater facility for, you know, wastewater lands for the city of Sisters, wastewater lands for the city of Lepine, you know, the BLM has conveyed all sorts of land to Deschutes County for, you know, groundwater protection, and South County for industrial use in, you know, in the Bend area and North County. So I, I don't necessarily think it's, that ten years is, is the, is the assumption we need to use. And one of the, one of the, you know, a couple of the benefits of looking more favorably at, at federal land sites might be, A, cutting down on our, our distance, you know, our distance, you know, I forget what, how it was haul distance to waste centroid? I mean, so, I mean, it, the federal sites might actually show up very favorably from that perspective anyway, and that's a different criteria than the ownership, but, you know, one of the other things to think about is cost. You organize a federal conveyance, and, you know, I don't know how much, what kind of assumptions we're using for a land acre per cost to acquire a private land property, but, you know, if it's tens of thousands of dollars per acre, then, you know, you'd look at five hundred or more acres, and that adds up to be quite a bit. If it's, it's probably less than that, but I don't, I don't know exactly what we're, what kind of assumptions we're using for that. So there may be some real reasons to, in that ownership criteria, not to, not to weight federal properties so low?
Commissioner Shane, you had, you had brought up the, the question of potential for BLM land with me some time ago, and it has been a struggle to get a connection with the Bureau of Land Management. I finally had a response after multiple emails a couple of weeks ago when I called the office. I believe when Tim Shimke and Tom Anderson met with them, they discussed a, a list of disposal properties with the category, it has nothing to do with landfills, just land that the BLM has identified that they don't necessarily need to keep.
Right.
And those would have been, would be a little bit more straightforward to go through to acquire, and I think at that time, Tom and Tim had felt that they were not in appropriate locations, but I've been trying to link back up with the BLM to try to get that list and map from them. And they're just, they're just not very good at responding back.
I have a couple of...
Very frustrating.
What you guys said about it taking an act of Congress...
To get the local office to call them.
Really, I mean, you get, you get one of your federal legislators interested in this, and the BLM jumps for them, right? They don't, they don't jump for us, but they will jump for, you know, one of our two senators, or, you know, like, soon we're, soon we'll have more than one representative, you know, House representative for, for Deschutes County as well. And so I, if we really, if we were serious about looking at those sites, that would be the, the kind of pathway I would recommend, that, that we enlist one of our members of Congress to kind of put the thumb on the BLM, and...
I would like to see...
They would, they would move faster.
Chad, I totally just, they always answer me. I have about three or four of them that are so good, so let me talk to you later, and I'll give you the numbers, and, yeah, they're, they're great. You know, I run into them at, like, Sisters Coffee or something, but, no, they've always been excellent. In fact, one of them participated in the meeting the other day about China Hat. So, and it was somebody that I had not met before, but he actually was there at that meeting, so...
Yeah.
But let's, I'll give you some numbers.
Yeah, and this is what you get. I really would like to see what this, this list of disposal sites looks like.
Yeah, I have cell phones. They'll, they'll call you.
The BLM district manager, Dennis, I mean, he would, he, it's Dennis Tietzel still, right?
But there's somebody else. Well, Jeff Kitchens is really good too. And then, I'm trying to think who was on my meeting the other day. It was somebody I hadn't worked with before.
But Dennis is the boss.
But not my intended...
District manager, field, field area managers.
They have not been very good about responding to inquiries. It's been a little bit...
Well, we'll work on that.
Yeah, and, and I do want to reiterate is that it is not seen as a fatal flaw, it's just has a lower score. And, you know, just given the fact that, you know, you're needing to bring something online within seven years, that wanting to make sure that, you know, we're looking...
But getting a weight of one or two out of five for a criteria, that accounts for fifteen, five point six percent of the total, I mean, that's, it can make a difference.
It can, it can. One thing I would like to note as well, and this is why it is pretty important that, you know, while we're following the criteria, we're also, you know, kind of just getting a general narrative of a given site, and the overall description of that site, because you might also have a piece of property that maybe it's owned by the state, or a private, or whatever, and it, it only ends up being three hundred acres, but it's adjacent on two sides by BLM property, which would be actually a perfect example of where, you know, we would probably be able to show that site have, have narrower buffers against that BLM site, property, and even looking at longer-term acquisition of BLM properties, you know?
What's the footprint of the current site?
Hundred forty-five acres.
Oh, yeah, we're talking...
Two hundred fifty-acre for landfill footprint, and a minimum two hundred fifty-acre buffer.
But that's just good to think of it, you know, we've got this, and we're looking for this.
Yeah.
Knowing that it'll be...
Yeah, yep.
And you've told me that Friar is too small, right?
Friar is too small.
Okay.
And it's, it probably would not score well in the, in the criteria. Shallow groundwater. Shallow groundwater.
Oh, there? It's shallow too?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Well, as, when I, when I say shallow, anything compared to not landfill is shallow. We're, it's 700 feet to groundwater at the landfill.
Okay.
Oaks and Alfalfa were telling us they had, they're over 800 feet, so.
Where's that, I'm sorry?
Alfalfa.
Oh. Yeah, some of the, some of the areas are very deep to groundwater, if you can find it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was a, that was a big tangent.
Any other questions on, on the, the criteria? Specific criteria or the categories or anything? Before I go to the, the final slide?
Well, just acknowledge that, yeah, I mean, this is a set of criteria. It, it's good to know the percentages, the weighting and everything. But this is going to give us a feel for each, each opportunity out there. Because once you, once you have a couple of them on a, you know, side by side, just touching any of these things could change them obviously. But we'll, at least we'll know the values and why we would choose a site over another site.
Yeah, and, and that's right. And that's, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we develop the, the criteria ahead of having sites so that, you know, we can ensure that those knobs are objective, you know, when we're, when we're looking at them and, you know, and how the, how the different sites score.
Yep. I do, I really think that having those, those spatial laters in individual maps that you can show to people, the, you know, I've, I've worked a lot with the kinds of conservation and land use stakeholders that I think we're anxious about in this process. And, you know, being able to show them important data and criteria in a, in a spatial visual format is really helpful for communicating with those folks and, and kind of telling them, telling them the stories that they want to understand.
Commissioner, Derek? I can just ask one question, and you know a question I'm going to ask. But I just, I'm sorry, I haven't had a chance to look at this now. But I don't see here, again, the metolious area of critical state concern.
You were gonna ask that. Yeah, it, it's actually mentioned in the, the site zoning section. It's in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's like it has a zero by it.
It does. It is a fatal fly area. And that, that was one of the things that we picked up out of the SWAC meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner, Derek, did you, were you gonna ask a question?
No, that's fine. I have your numbers for you. I couldn't share them with you, so I wrote them on a piece of paper.
And bring up the last slide.
So, so this slide is, we've already talked about some of this, but it is kind of the, the steps going forward. So, this first step really is this, this application of the criteria. I've already got the GIS people starting to work on it, just on the fatal flaw. Because the fatal flaws are pretty much set. Especially the federal ones. And those are the ones that we're, we're kind of bringing on just to make sure that we have all the data available through our GIS and, and the like. Not to say that we can't tweak those, you know, based upon comments from the, and changes coming out of these meetings. But just to ensure that we get started on this, this process. And so that's, that's beginning. And then the, the, the note here, this exercise does not identify specific sites. So, we're not looking at specific sites yet. We're looking at areas where sites could be. Essentially is what we're, we're coming down to out of this. And then, you know, we're, we're gonna do this initial countywide screening for specific sites. You know, it, it's hard to say exactly how many sites could be out there. And, and this is just like on how many parcel assemblages would give us about the area that we need. And that there might be somewhere in the neighborhood, you know, 50 to 100 sites that, that could fit that based upon, you know, knowing what parcel sizes there are in the county and, you know, what might be available to, to put together. The thing is, is that those are really hard to, to really say whether, you know, a given location is a site or not, because you don't know if the properties are available or, you know, if there are some, some fatal flaws on any given site. And so that hasn't been done. And so that's what we'll, we'll come up with out of this, this process. So, that could be kind of a, a bit of a scatter diagram, you know, actually looking at, you know, what parcels are available within that area as we start drilling down into the criteria themselves. So, we'll do this, the broad site evaluation to score sites. Reduce the sites to about 12 sites, we're figuring. You know, if, if there's more, we could, we could be looking at more. Our guess is that it's probably gonna be around, around 12 that, that score and look good enough, you know, to, to go forward with at that, at that time. And then, looking at those further, you know, kind of drilling down the, the criteria a little bit more, doing the site visits, it's non-invasive site visits. We're just kind of looking at them, doing some ground truthing of this, of what we're seeing on GIS. And bringing those down to a three-site shortlist. So, the three-site, three-site shortlist essentially brings us to a point where we would pull together a scope of work and budget to do really intensive evaluations of those three sites. So, this would include drilling, full, full wetland and stream delineation, if there are on, on these sites. Some archaeological, at least pedestrian surveys of the sites so that we really get a better feel for each of these sites. And at times, you can, you can all even roll all the way up, back up to the fatal flaw analysis on a site at that point, because all of a sudden you, you find out that, you know, some, something that was not mapped there before. And so there's a potential that something could, could hit there. And one of the things is, we've, in past projects we've worked on, you know, we've actually had it where we've kind of come to a, a shortlist, but one of those sites fell out for whatever reason, and then another site was brought in. Just because you didn't want to short yourselves from looking at, at a good, a good representative selection of, of sites. And so that could happen too. Not saying it would, but it, it would be something that, you know, you may want to consider at that point. If there's one of those sites that was kind of on the fence, you know, whether you wanted to look at it or not, that maybe you would bring, bring back into the, into the process at that time. And then, then ultimately to, to identify a preferred site out of, out of that, out of those three. That is really from a technical standpoint. And those, you know, it would be a recommendation from us to, to staff and, and to the SWAC and commissioners for your decision making at that point. And I guess the, the one point on that also, we would be down to that shortlist of sites first quarter of next year. So, you know, I would say by the end of the, of the first quarter, possibly sooner. You know, sometime earlier in the first quarter of, of 23.
You're saying the three sites by like March of 23?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what they were saying on the radio today. So, I'm glad you confirmed that.
Yeah, good.
How you'll deal? Will, will there be, is there a possibility that the same piece of land could show up multiple times on our list of 12? So, you're just like, well, this 300 acres plus this is a good site. But this 300 acres plus this is also a good site. Or, and, you know, if there's something that meets the size criteria all by itself, but, you know, maybe it could be lumped together with something else to, 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 to make a suitable site. Like, how will you deal with the, the same parcel of land potentially, you know, potentially showing up multiple times? Because I could see if you just do a, like, if you, basically you're scoring every single parcel of land, large parcel of land out there. I could see that happening. But, and, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, you know, that if there's a really choice piece of land from a whole bunch of criteria considerations, and it could be paired with this or it could be paired with that. I mean, those are, those are, you know, two distinct scenarios that we'd want to consider. But, you know, how do you deal with, with, with those kinds of land ownership showing up multiple times in your site list?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. So, when we were working with IT on the, the GIS application, we were looking at the, I think the, the base analysis, 250 acres. And two common properties, less than 250 acres with common ownership, that, that net out to 250 acres more would show up in the, in the app as well. It's, it's interesting. You're, so each, each of those aggregates or individual sites will show up as, as, as individual targets on, on that, that, that first round on the GIS. And that, that's, it's an interesting concept. I think, you know, you could definitely see visually if you have a number of sites that are, are showing high scoring. And there could, there could be some, some scrutiny of those at some, at some combination, as you're suggesting there.
I mean, it could, it could make just a, a general area of the county pop. Like, six of our sites that are, of our best sites are showing up right around here. So, there's, definitely want to check that out some more.
Yeah. And it could. And my, my guess is what we're, we're probably gonna look at in that circumstance is that if, if they are contiguous and so, you know, that, and so together they add up to 900 acres, but, you know, you could, you could cut out two different 500 acre parcels. We'd probably look at that as one 900 acre site. And, and then score it that way, you know, based upon, on the criteria. But if one configuration was scored out totally different from another, on different criteria, we may look at it as two different sites. I mean, this is actually flexible enough to be able to do that, if it, if that made sense. Because you could, you could see where it, for top, topography, it might score out better one, one dimension. But it might score out a lot better for access and, and other issues on another configuration. And so, you know, we, we could look at both or just say, you know, look at that entire site and that it's got, it's got these positive attributes and this is how we would lay it out. Yeah.
I mean, my other question was, so I, that, that, that haul distance to waste centroid criteria, I think that that one's pretty, pretty important. And if I'm reading this correctly, I mean, that's 1.75% of, out of 100. And, you know, I, I guess I would just ask, you know, whether it would make sense to put some more weight to that.
You know, we, we can certainly do that. You know, that, that was one of the objectives of, of meeting with, with the board today was to, to present the, the criteria to you. And we'll be returning on the 13th to, to, to get any feedback you might have on it. At least I'm not expecting you to digest us all today. But if there, if there are criteria that you feel should be weighted differently, we, we, you know, that's one of the, the goals we have with, with meeting and conferring with you on this.
Right.
You know, the, the question haul distance, I believe, came up specifically in conversations with a couple of the SWAC members.
It did.
As well. And it's, it's, it's difficult to parse out when you have so many criteria to, to give something an exceptionally heavy weight. And my, my thought process on this has been that as we get down to those, those shortlisted sites, I, I think things like haul distance will play a, a more substantial role. And if we have a, a site that's all the way on the very east end of Deschutes County and something that's, that's a bit closer that are in that, that, that first 12 or that, that bottom three cut, I think that, that will, will play a more significant role. And certainly if we, if you, if you, if you want us to, excuse me, to adjust that percent weighing at this stage, we can certainly do that as well. I mean, the cost of fuel is on everybody's mind every time we go to the gas station.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to go to the gas station.
You're right.
I mean, help me think this out a little bit as well. This solid waste management facility, this is not where, you know, Joe Smith with his pickup full of, you know, full of junk is gonna go to, to unload. They're still gonna go to Knott and tip into that, into that, you know, load a, load a bigger truck, right? So, this is, but this is where, this is where Cascade Disposal and all of the, our collectors are going to be hauling.
Maybe.
Their big trucks to.
Maybe. There's, there's a, a, a line, I want to say 30 miles, where it's actually more cost effective to consolidate the waste locally and transfer rather than having a fleet of garbage trucks driving all the way to the very far end of the county. Yeah, so there, that, that is taken into consideration. You wouldn't necessarily have all of the, the route trucks driving to the, the landfill. It depends on how far out it actually is.
Then you would have the inefficiency of loading a truck and unloading a truck and loading a truck and then driving it out to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's an inefficiency in some respects, but it's, it is an efficiency from a transportation and logistics standpoint.
Yeah. It, it really can be. And, and it's also a, it's, when you look at the impacts along a haul route, how many vehicles do you want going out to the site? So, that's also what drives it in some cases. Because we've had, we've had some sites, in fact, one of the sites that we, landfills that we cited, it's 15, 15 miles from their transfer station where the old landfill was. Very similar situation is here. They ended up deciding, you know, we're gonna send everything through the transfer station and we're only going out to the site with the, the, the longer distance vehicles. Their, their reasoning behind that was they wanted to really simplify operations at the site. And so it's a, it was an operations thing for them, as well as somewhat of a, of a, of a, I think for the, the local residents out there that you didn't have as many vehicles accessing the site as you would if, you know, your collection vehicle went out there too. But in this day and age, it's very rare for a site not to be at least somewhat of a limited, a limited access facility. And so, it, so it's back to your point to begin with. It will definitely be limited access from the standpoint of Joe public going out there to the site.
I think one of the, the things that, that will, could play into this down the road, and Tim has brought in this expertise to the, to the, the county with, with his experience, is doing some processing of waste before it actually gets loaded to go to the landfill. There's, there's a lot of recyclables in our waste stream. You know, we're definitely looking at, at bolstering the, the curbside and recycling opportunities. But there could very well be opportunities for processing waste before it goes to the landfill. So, that, that would be another reason why you wouldn't necessarily want to have those route trucks go from their collection point to the landfill itself. That we may want an intermediate process in there.
And those would be things that happened at, at Nagus or kind of continued operations at Knott or?
Correct. Yeah. When, when we were designing the, the facilities at Knott landfill, that's so many years ago, early 2000s, we actually had a sister building next to the existing transfer station. If you've been out there, that's why we have that large paved area out there. It was actually a building to be located, which was gonna be a material recovery facility. We were gonna process waste and then reload it for, for the landfill. And for budgetary reasons, we'd like to not to do that. But that opportunity is still there. That, that, that piece of land is still there for that, that type of facility, should we elect to go that way.
I, I just know, you know, in the world of forestry contractors and, and logging, I mean, the, you, you tell those guys like, yeah, you know, you're thinning out saw logs and chip logs and, you know, you could load the, you could load the truck and then bring it someplace and you could sort the stuff. But that basically, every time you take a log off the truck and you put it back on, it kills the economics of the project. So, I, I mean, I just have this principle of like, you know, don't, don't load the truck, unload the truck and reload the truck to get it, to get the stuff to where it's going and then have a, you know, and, and your back haul. You know, I mean, this is, this is pretty much an empty back haul.
It is, yeah. Possibly. I mean, perhaps some of these solid waste management facilities that may end up on the site, we could be, you know, bringing a product back from the site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's not just the distance out to there with load. It's the, it's the empty driving distance. Yeah, I, I would, I just personally, I would like to see a higher weight assigned to the haul distance in this set of criteria. I don't know what the other commissioners think about that.
Oh, I went through all the criteria and I could debate every one of them up and down a little bit. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm like, you know, this is a great starting point. It, it hangs together well. And, I mean, if, if, if the numbers are a little different, I'm, I don't mind. Because I know, once we start the process, things can be dialed in too.
This is, this, like, you know, we got 14% assigned to greater sage grouse. And, you know, to me, that basically should just be a fatal flaw, flaw criteria. If you're, if you're in the combining zone, the answer is no. And, and we should save our percentages for, you know, our, our points for stuff like.
Well, it might be a good, a good location for. Well, it might be a good, good location for lack if we have big buffer areas and a little bit of water or whatever they, you know, and the sage is there. May be good for some lakes.
I have a question about precipitation. Do you consider snowfall, any precipitation or are you only considering rainfall?
Both rainfall and snow.
Both of them?
It has to do with the impact of leachate generation on the landfill.
Right. So where it says more than 25 inches of precipitation annually, even though we get like an average 11 inches of rainfall and 33 inches of snowfall, at least at Sisters, would you add those two together or do you divide the snow? Is there some formula?
Yeah, it's the water content. So it's that total, total precipitation, which is rainfall, sleet, snow, all forms of precipitation.
Yeah, and it's the water content of the snow, not the.
Right. Not the inches. Okay. So how does that normally work out then? If you normally get, let's say, 30 inches of snowfall, is it, what normally, how water, what's the water content normally? Does it depend? I mean, is there a huge variance?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, depending on where you are, you know, snow can have water content of one inch per 12 inches. And that's typically the number I hear out there. But, I mean, as people on the west side know that, you know, where it's cascade concrete, that has a lot higher water content than, you know, your nice powder snow over this way. So.
The water density at, if you're skiing at Mount Hood, is going to be 10 times greater than if you're skiing out in Colorado, Utah.
Yeah.
So, any other questions? Are we good then?
So, right now, we have done a press release and we are looking for public input as well. It's not a formal public comment process, but again, we want to keep this an open process. So we'll share any comments we receive with, from the community with you guys when we meet next Wednesday.
And I've been mentioning it all over the place also. Whenever I get to speak, I say, solid waste citing is so important. Pay attention once in a generation.
Yeah.
And once we get through this process and get your approval of this criteria, then the really hard work is going to be starting here. You know, we'll start having a lot more information out to the public. We are working on a website. You know, the question that came up about people hauling to the landfill versus using Knott landfills as their receiving facility, we're putting a list of frequently asked questions together. And that's one of them that came up at the SWAC meeting last month, was what happens to the Knott landfill facilities. You know, somebody had the concept, that was all going to close and go away. The intent of that facility was to support a new landfill when Knott closes. So as we start this process, a lot of the information and progress we're making on the site screening criteria will be posted on that website for public consumption as well.
Well.
One last thing I would request. If some of these, if some of these criteria are like complete fatal flaw criteria, it's like one or zero, you know? There's no like, oh, well, you know, if it's really bad, then it's, then it's a no-go. But if some of them are complete fatal flaw criteria, if you, if you could kind of do that overall score, kind of sorting those, like, assume that, assume that any project that you're scoring has already, you know, made it through, passed fatal flaw, then what's the weight that you would, that you would assign to, to that criteria? Then that 1.75% might not look so bad to me after, after you filter those out.
Yeah. And there's, there's, one thing I'll just add to that, there's very few items that are just kind of one and zero.
Okay.
You know, and including sage grouse, because, you know, there's different levels of protection. Yeah, there's the combining zone, but then there's also the other considerations in there as well. And so, that, I would just say that there, you know, there's mitigation opportunities and there's other means that, you know, that some areas could be considered. And so you don't necessarily want to knock those out right off hand. Yeah.
So one more question, a little bit different topic. What's the status of landfill gas reuse contracting or whatever?
We're in discussion with Cascade Natural Gas on the project and they will be coming on the 28th to start doing due diligence on the facilities we have at Knott landfill.
So that's the path now?
That's the path, yeah.
We think we're going to go down as a partner, so.
Correct.
Put it in the pipeline.
The concept of the gas being distributed and consumed locally is very intriguing. Their forecasted cost performance was very similar to what Cascade Natural Gas had, excuse me, what Northwest Natural Gas had, and they were doing pipeline injection. In fact, Cascade was a little bit better on that. So we have, I've received a very rough agreement from them and added a few things and sent it back. But until they come out with the due diligence analysis and we start getting some more specific things, then we'll probably be meeting with Dave and his group in legal to start hashing out the specifics on the agreement. So we're probably a couple of months out yet from something formal. There's a lot of background work that has to take place before we can get to that point.
So there, do we still kind of see it as building out, finishing off, putting waste in the ground here for another eight or nine or 10 years? And then they'll just, there'll be a landfill gas production for another 20 or 30 years?
About 20 years after that, yeah. The standard mode of thinking, landfill gas production is about a 30-year cycle. So if we're in the beginning of that and we have eight or 10 years to go, we could run out another 20 years beyond closure. And that's, that was how Cascade Natural Gas had put their forecast together.
Right. And that kind of, and that tapering off of methane production was a significant part of the consideration of why to go with a Cascade Natural Gas or Northwest Natural as opposed to one of the other entities that potentially would have offered more money in the short term, but based on models that are, you know, really dependent on renewable energy credits and RINs and things that, things that crashed in the last, in the last five years. So, you know, like, there's higher risk, higher reward proposers, but because we don't, you know, we know that the landfill will only produce methane for a finite amount of time, we don't have five years to just kind of, you know, play the, you know, gamble essentially on some higher risk, higher reward proposer. Because if they don't come through and we're five years down the line, then, then the viable life of methane production at the landfill is, is, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a much, much more, much more of an economic dog at that point. So.
Yeah. One other point too, Cascade Natural Gas and Northwest Natural Gas being, natural gas utilities are under regulatory obligations to reduce their carbon intensive sources. And renewable natural gas from landfills is a credit that they're all after. So they're highly motivated to make these work.
Thank you.
Yes, I haven't been necessarily keeping, keeping the other commissioners updated on the process.
Very good points, yeah.
But I've been, you know, I sat in on the interviews for the, the first and second interviews for the proposers for the landfill methane gas evaluation. And I feel like we're on a really good, good track. And the one, one other thing, kind of thinking big picture long-term, is after we set up all this infrastructure to scrub methane, to be able to put it in the, in the natural gas pipeline out at the landfill, there might be opportunities to do an anaerobic digester system or something like that out there. That would be essentially a whole second source of methane over time. So you've already got all this infrastructure to get the, get the gas clean and get it in the pipeline. And then you can create another gas source, you know, that compost material and, you know, captures all the, all the offgassing from that to kind of get more, get more benefit out of the infrastructure that you've built.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will see you on the 13th.
Great. Thank you. 13th of July.
Yes.
Okay.
June 13th.
That's today.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. June, what am I saying?
22nd?
22nd.
There you go.
22nd.
I know, I'm like going, wow.
I apologize.
Any other items?
So he's got a, media texted, I don't know if it texted all three of us about getting a on-camera interview about this criteria right now. So we'll see. I don't know if he's in the building or coming to the building or whatever.
They are good. They were really good.
But also, the other, the other, other item that we might, we could deal with right now is a request from John McLeod from Mount Bachelor to visit with us about a renewable energy grant proposal. The other commissioners are open to reviewing that.
Okay, is he available now then or not?
If we turn the screens off, we can see if.
Ryan?
Is John, did you see John McLeod? He said the lawyers that are available. Did he come in?
Yes, please. Great, thank you.
No, not yet. We have him coming on and then we'll go to executive. Thank you.
Sorry, can you all hear me?
Here we go.
There we go.
All right. Well, good afternoon, commissioners. Good to see you all. Thank you for this opportunity. I think we'll keep it brief. We've talked at length about this project before and thank you for your previous support in the form of a million dollar contribution from the county towards this project. In the interim, since we spoke last, we've secured 1.5 million from the Forest Service Wood Energy Grant Program, which is not what we applied for. We applied for 3.8 million, but that fund was capped at 1.5 and we received the maximum amount in the current year. And we've been made aware of another grant opportunity through the Oregon Department of Energy for renewable, community renewable energy projects, which our consultant Wisewood, who presented at the last meeting, feel we have a good chance at. But that grant must be applied for by a public entity, which the county is. And so I guess to keep it simple and get right to the point, the, this request is to request the county to act in that capacity on behalf of this project, to be the grant applicant for this community renewable energy grant for $1 million. The work will be done by ourselves and Wisewood in terms of preparing the grant application and submitting it back to the commissioners, to you all, to sign off and then submit. I believe the deadline for that is July 8th. So really, the point of this call is just, and I've spoken, communicated with Phil, Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Deboe about this, not you Patty, but directly. But since we'd all talked about this before, we thought we'd just kind of be expeditious and put this request in front of you. I think all that's required is a simple, yes, we're willing to act in that capacity and then we'll go do some work and come back with something. And maybe that's an administrative matter afterwards, or maybe we need to present again. And I guess all of those things are up to you. So.
So has legal looked at anything? Nothing?
So this is, yeah, Department of Energy, State Department of Energy, grant opportunity. You know, if it fits and works well, I'm supportive of the application. So this is just starting that process today. And as I say, I mean, the consultants of the project, Wisewood or whoever's out there, they're going to know, you know, how to fill it out and whatever. So it's just the will of the board at this point.
They, they checked with the Community Renewable Energy Program staff at Oregon Department of Energy and they said that this is a acceptable structure for a proposal for, you know, essentially the county to act as a, as a go-between or pass-through for Mount Bachelor on a project like this. Some of the other considerations we need, we need to think about are that the county will be submitting for projects ourselves, you know, for our own facilities. You know, one of the, one of the projects that is, that has kind of emerged would be for a solar array on one of the buildings at the fairgrounds, which this, this grant program has sort of two emphasis, emphases. One is, you know, how much, how much renewable energy can you generate and, you know, how good of a, you know, return on investment is it? But the second piece is a resiliency piece. And so that, that proposal for a solar array at the fairgrounds with, with battery backup and maybe, you know, that, that power supply helping to improve the reliability of the well system at the fairgrounds makes the fairgrounds a much, much better place for us to deal with Cascadia earthquake event refugees or wildfire refugees or whoever. So like, in that way, I think that that project is going to score very well in terms of the state, the state's resiliency criteria. But my hope would be that the Mount Bachelor project, since it's not a solar project, that they would kind of look at it in a complete, as a completely different category. You know, just like apples and oranges and, you know, so you wouldn't be compared to our, our apple project at the, at the, at the fairgrounds, but you would be put in a bin full of oranges and compared to those projects.
I'm supportive of supporting this application for Mount Bachelor's biomass project, which we have shown support for in the past. And then I don't, yeah, I mean, for the fairground project you're talking about, I haven't heard about that specifically, so I don't know.
And, you know, I'm sorry, I have more, more, even more background. So the, one of the reasons I'm tracking all this is because I sit on the advisory board for the state for the current Community Renewable Energy Program. And so people have been asking me about, about the program. And part of one of my jobs sitting on the advisory board has been to put this information, you know, put information about this solicitation cycle out into the community. So that's, that's part of the reason why I've been hearing about proposals from various entities. Great. But I won't, I won't get to review either our proposal.
You'll have to recuse, I guess, fair enough.
Yeah.
I'm happy to answer any other questions you have about this request.
Any thoughts, Commissioner O'Dear?
Yeah, I'd like our legal to just tell me that, you know, it's okay. Yeah, I'd like the renewable project, I just.
Legal hasn't seen any paperwork. I'd be happy to look at it, see if there's any obligations or responsibilities the county takes on other than just literally being a fiscal pass-through agent. And that may very well be all we are. I have no reason to doubt the Mount Bachelor folks, but I have not put eyes on it.
So does that fund your project in full then? It doesn't, does it? Are you still short funding to get your project, remember?
Yes. I mean, because we were, we're not able to get the full amount of the grant application from the Wood Energy Grant, but we got their maximum because that was short of the ask. That kind of puts us back into, okay, we're still on the hunt, I guess, a little bit for additional funding to make this a viable project. This would get us back very close to that. And we're in the process of working through some of the details of accepting the Wood Energy Grant programs. So there's more information to come on where this is going to cost out and whether that project can be phased. And then, you know, certainly we can provide more detail. We have some information to send to you subsequent to this meeting about the grant program, the requirements for the county. And then there would be more information again when we actually complete the application and send it in. It was just a matter of establishing whether you would be willing to act in this capacity to, you know, make it worth going and doing the work of preparing the grant application and then bringing it back to you prior to July 8th to meet those submission deadlines. So we're suggesting that we would carve out some money of the award to cover the. the county for any costs associated with administering the grant, including any reporting subsequent to the project, of which there is some, and certainly open to thoughts on, we were, we were suggesting allocating $20,000 to the county to cover costs of reporting and administration. Based on what we know, that's a reasonable amount, and, but certainly open for review by your finance and legal folks on that front.
John, what did you say? Were you asking for 3.8 million, and you got the 1.5? What was, you were asking for?
Yes, 3.8 was the original grant request from the, the Forest Service, and we got 1.5. This would, this would bring us to 2.8 plus the million from the county's previous commitment, so that would be a total funding package of 3.5 million. The, the project cost was around 7 million when we submitted for the Wood Energy Grant, but we, we need to re-cost in today's money, but I think since the last time we did this in January, there'll probably be some increase, but maybe not a whole lot, so...
It may be going down soon, too.
Beg your pardon?
I said it actually may be going down. If we're going into a recession, some things are going to be going down.
There's, there's a lot of moving parts of the economics of this project, like, for example, the, I'm, I'm sure since the time that they financially modeled this project, that the cost of propane has gone up substantially.
That's true, and we're in the process of remodeling that again to make it contemporary, and know where we stand. There's still a very, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of interest in this project, and it's been really well received when we presented it to various agencies, and we're very excited to, and we think it's a great project. But also, we've been over that. I think, so, you know, there is work to be done in the next few weeks here to answer some of those, you know, questions about, A, phasing, B, how much the project costs, see if there's anything that the county needs to understand about their role in this, and then, and then reviewing the grant application itself and getting it submitted.
So can you get something to, maybe our legal by tomorrow, or the next day? So Dave can take a look?
We've got a little package that outlines, summarizes the grant program, and a flyer from Oregon Department of Energy as well, that we can, that we, I think we've already sent in to your administration, that I think they get it to you, I would hope, by tomorrow.
Okay, great. Now, so Dave can take a look at it, and that would be good.
And John, you can leave us sort of in, in, you can leave us in Wisewood's hands to kind of evaluate this more and take, take next steps, as you, as you're headed out of the country for a couple weeks, very soon, right?
Yeah.
No, it's interesting, someone was going to charge us 10% for doing some loan thing, and it's like, really, we just want you to get your project going. You know, I don't know if we would, if the county would really need 20,000 to cover our costs. I mean, we are not the bank of the shoots, I will repeat, but, you know, we are, we are trying to be helpful for your project.
Yeah, no, I, we very much appreciate that, and that's just kind of a, a placeholder, it can be whatever it can be, we can just agree to cover cost, whatever, whatever we want, however we want to frame that.
Okay, great. So do we need a vote or anything, or can we wait?
My suggestion is let's wait until next week, until June 22nd. We received the documents at 3:30 during the meeting. Thanks to Matt for sending those documents to us, we just didn't have a chance to print them, to get them to you in the past hour. So if we can schedule this for your consideration on the 22nd, if that still works, that would be great. Dave, does that give you enough time? And we're good, okay?
We're good, then.
Okay. And I think that was the intention, is do we want to put direction to this or not? And I support putting direction to it. Let's bring it back to another meeting and find out if we're committing anything financially, or long-term, or whatever, or legally.
We'll need to make decisions on submitting the county projects to this same grant program sometime before July 8th anyway, so it's, I mean, it can all kind of, it can all proceed together. I mean, it's, I don't, I don't think there's, there's urgency besides kind of giving an initial indication to Mount Bachelor that, that we're, we're supportive.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
Hey, have a great day.
And speaking of, I do have a meeting there tonight, so...
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. So, may we now go to executive?
We do. Yes, we have Eric and Janice, and I believe Kathleen may be online as well.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.